Where is?
Can't start without the bus.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order for the May 12th, 2022, Apple Valley City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome both our in-person and virtual audiences this evening, or our in-person attendees. When your name is called, please approach the podium to address the council for our virtual attendees during our meeting. If you have questions or comments for the audience participation portion of the meeting, please press the raise hand symbol and the meeting organizer will notify us. You'd like to speak. With that, the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask everyone to rise and join us in the pledge. Yeah, it's fun to hear a familiar voice while we're up doing that in the background. Second item on the agenda this evening is to approve the agenda. And Tom, are there any changes?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have one suggested acknowledgement. You have an updated item on your agenda. This is 5B. 5B is the proclamation for May 30th Memorial Day. The sponsor provided us with an updated proclamation and you have that in front of you tonight, so you should acknowledge updated information for 5B.
Wonderful. Thank you. So with that change, do we have a motion to approve?
On my own.
Second.
Motion from Grendel, a second from Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The next item on our agenda is the audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the agenda. We have a total of 10 minutes for this item. We'll start with the virtual audience. Meeting organizer, are there any, is there anyone in the virtual audience who would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, there's no one that would like to speak.
Thank you. And I did not see anyone signed up. I don't believe we have anyone in person, so I'll offer it anyway. Seeing none, we'll close the audience participation portion of the meeting and we'll move on to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or citizen requests to pull an item. Council members, are there any items from consent you would like to pull this evening? Hearing none, meeting organizer, is there anyone in the virtual audience who would like to pull an item?
Mr. Mayor, there's no one in the audience who would like to pull an item.
Thank you. And for our in-person attendees, is there anyone who would like to pull an item? Again, seeing none, we will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Melander and a second from Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda carries, which brings us to the first item on our regular agenda, which is to proclaim May 27th, 2022 as National Poppy Day and May 2022 as Poppy Month. And Gina Deerfeldt and Nancy Harlow have this item, I believe. Would you like to come forward? Please, yeah, please face this way and step close to the microphone so those who are, it's like y'all are thousands and thousands of people viewing remotely can hear you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. So I'm Gina Deerfeldt and this is Nancy Harlow. We are members of the American Legion Auxiliary, Unit 1776 in Apple Valley. And our sole purpose is to support our veterans and their families. And so Poppy Month has been designated, or May has been designated as Poppy Month. And so we're able to distribute poppies at various public locations. We'll be at Von Hansen's and Ace Hardware throughout the weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, throughout the rest of this month. So for folks that would like to come and, and support our veterans by donating, that's very much appreciated. And so now with the proclamation.
Please do, please do.
Thank you. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by its citizens and soldiers. And whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the fields of battle. And whereas a nation and its citizens must be reminded of the price of war and the debt it owes to those who have died in war. And whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of the sacrifice of lives in all wars. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind Americans annually of the debt owed through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, hereby proclaims May as Poppy Month and the 27th of May, 2022 as National Poppy Day. And asks that all citizens wear the memorial poppy on these days to pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom. Proclaimed this 12th day of May, 2022.
Thank you. Very well done. Do we have a motion to accept the proclamation?
Second.
Councilmember Goodwin made the motion. Councilmember Grendel seconded it. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and that carries. Believe you have poppies with you this evening as well? I think we would like some, and I would say anybody else in the audience who would like some as well, feel free to bring them up and
Okay.
Really make some donations here, so.
Well, thank you so much. And we'll be around after the meeting as well.
Perfect. The next item on our agenda is 5B, which is the proclamation recognizing Memorial Day. Yeah, historically, we've had Lloyd Cyberg here to present this, probably as long as I remember doing this. Lloyd can't be with us this evening. I am, I will happily read this proclamation, although I will do it, do Lloyd no justice. I have really big shoes to fill here, so. With that, Tom, any other comments on that or just jump right in? Perfect. Before I jump in though, we do have on the county round coming events tonight, we do have the Memorial Day service at the Legion, so we'll talk about that as we get to that. Just a reminder that that is not to be missed ceremony as well, so. Thank you. One, two's good, two's good. Thank you. Thank you.
This one. Already got hit by the auxiliary this morning, so I'm gonna get hit twice now.
You can. Never have too many poppies, right?
I have a cigar box full of my.
All right, so we have a, we have a City of Apple Valley proclamation, whereas Memorial Day has been observed in the United States since General Logan of the Grand Army of the Republic issued General Order Number 11 on May 5, 1868, setting aside May 30th, 1868, for the purpose of strewing flowers or otherwise decorating the graves of soldiers of the federal and Confederate troops who lost their lives in the Civil War that raged from 1861 to 1865. And whereas over 1,345,677 men and women who have been killed in action or lost their lives from other causes in wars and police actions in defense of the United States of America, from the American Revolution to last year's evacuation of Kabul, Afghanistan. And whereas over 1,498,240 men and women who were injured in combat or by other means in time of war endure a constant reminder of their sacrifice for the freedom of the United States and others around the world. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, hereby acknowledges the federal proclamation of May 30th, 2022 as Memorial Day. And asks that all citizens set aside May 30th, 2022 as a day of remembrance and invites all citizens to attend the memorial ceremony scheduled for 11:00 a.m. at the Apple Valley American Legion Memorial. Further, citizens are reminded that flag etiquette provides that all flags be flown at half-staff until 12:00 noon in a special salute to the sacrifice of the casualties and injured in various wars and police actions. Proclaim this 12th day of May, 2022. We'll take a motion to accept.
On my own.
Motion from Grendel, second from Melander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And thank you to all of our veterans with us or not for their service. With that, we will move on to, to item 5C, which is to proclaim Music in Kelly Park. And I know our park act director Eric Carlson and our county commissioner and longtime Apple Valley Arts Foundation supporter, Mary Heaman Rowland have this item.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the community. Mary Heaman Rowland is here this evening to talk a little bit about the Music in Kelly Park series. It's a summertime favorite here in Apple Valley, so I'm gonna let Mary take over and go through the slide presentation.
Thank you, Eric. And I am Mary Heaman Rowland and I am the co-president of the Apple Valley Arts Foundation, which was founded in 1998. And I want to say thank you for allowing us to come to this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. It's always good to be back here with great friends. Thank you for the great work that you're doing. And I want to personally invite you this evening to Music in Kelly Park, the concert series, this summer, 2022. It seems unbelievable that we're already here. So we will have some great and exceptional music performances this year in Music in Kelly Park. We want to make sure that everyone remembers that we do have food and beverages that are available for purchase. And then I want to explain to you about our prizes. Because of supply chain issues, we have been working with our Valley Bike and Ski and they are just terrific. Jeff and Colleen Milbauer have donated bicycles every year. And this year, we're going to be having it at the end of the, on August 12th, the last concert because, because of those supply chain issues. And I'm gonna see if I can do this. I did it very well this afternoon, or this earlier. Okay. So I want to tell you that there's a little bit of a change in our schedule. It will be, instead of starting at 6 o'clock, we're gonna start at 6:30. And we're gonna run until 8:30. Again, the concerts are free and we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to be able to get there after work. We found that people were asking, is there any way that you could start a little bit later? And we said yes. We have concerts. There are gonna be nine concerts this year from June 24th through August the 12th. The Apple Valley High School Rhythm and Blues Band and Scalise will kick us off. We'll have Five Speed, which also includes our president of our Chamber of Commerce, Ed Carney, and Michael Monroe, The Dweebs, Coyote Wild, JD Steel and McFail Community Youth Choir, The Power of Ten, and the Riverside All Stars. And I want you to know that on August the 12th, we will also be honoring my son, David Rowland. We want to thank our platinum sponsors. We could not do this without our business sponsorship. So Think Mutual Bank, who has been a platinum sponsor from the very beginning. And we're very happy this year that Nicole Junker from, she's a Realtor from EXP Realty in Pemberton Homes. And I believe that she's also a friend of the mayor's, is supporting us this year as a platinum sponsor, and we thank her for that. Our gold sponsors are longstanding Upennor North America, the American Legion Post 1776. And just to note about Upennor, they are sponsoring the August 12th concert. We want to also say a special thanks to our silver sponsors, Doherty, Melinda, Soulfest Hills and Bauer, and Wings Financial. So thank you to them. Our other sponsors, the Apple Valley Chamber of Commerce, the Apple Valley Rotary Club, which we have several rotarians in this city council meeting this evening, the Apple Valley Parks and Recreation. Thank you for all the great work that you do for us and with us. The Dakota County Tribune, thank you Patty, for the great work in publicizing our concerts. Sam's Club and Speed Pro, U-Haul, Valley Accounting, Valley Bike and Ski, Walmart, and Ericson Photography. Elixen, Elixen Photography. Sorry about that, Chris. And then our food vendors this year, we're excited that BD Sami's is one of our local food trucks is gonna be with us. Los Tortillas, who's been with us for several years, Rita's Italian Ice, and Ray's Barbecue, a longtime resident of Apple Valley, 30 years, I guess he said he's been here. So we want to take this time to give you a special invitation. We'd love to see you out there. We'd like you to come up on stage and we'll recognize you and come on out to Kelly Park, 6855 Fortino Street, Apple Valley. It is truly the gem of Apple Valley. So thank you very much and look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, Mary.
And I think we have a proclamation, and if Councilmember Grendel could read that, that would be great.
Great, thank you.
Whereas the city of Apple Valley is proud to provide cultural experiences for its residents. And whereas the Apple Valley Arts Foundation has offered to provide a music series on summer evenings, June 17th, 24th, July 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, and August 5th and 12th, 2022, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Kelly Park. And whereas the Apple Valley Arts Foundation, residents, civic organizations, business community and Parks and Recreation Department have joined together to develop this free music celebration. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, that said dates in June, July, and August 2022 are hereby proclaimed to be Music in Kelly Park. Be it further resolved, the city council declares this music series a community festival and encourages the cities, citizens of Apple Valley to support and attend these music events. Proclaim this 12th day of May, 2022. Grendel, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Goodwin and a second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for being such great, longtime supporters of, of great music in our community. And that strength of that partnership makes all the difference.
The Arts Foundation has been a, a driving force in this, not only Music in Kelly Park. You, you provided us a band, right? So we could do a reinvented Midwinter Fest this year. So we've been a great partner with the city in, in providing these things. 6:30, not six, as a reminder. So you're welcome to show up early, get your seat, just know musical start, right, a little later. And then you guys are all over social media, so if people are looking for updates, weather, any of those kind of things, that's where they can kind of find that information as it happens, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We always, if there is, you know, we had weather last night and there might be some tonight, I understand, as well. If there is weather, we will make that call by 11 o'clock and you will see that on social media. You'll see it on the city of Apple Valley's website and Park and Recreation and as well as the Apple Valley Arts Foundation website. So thanks for reminding us about that.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good evening.
Always great to see you. Come back, come back anytime. Next item on the agenda is 5D, which is Newt's 46, Inc., 15610 English Avenue. And Stephanie's gonna walk us through this one, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Newt's 46 Incorporated has submitted an application for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license and special license for Sunday liquor sales. The license is for premises located at 15610 English Avenue, Suite 100. The plans show that the restaurant will seat about approximately 180 people and a patio serving 30 people. If approved, the license would be effective beginning June 1st, 2022, with a target opening date of July 1st. The applic, excuse me, the application indicates the officers of record are David Michael Currie, Chief Executive Officer, and Mark Allen Currie, Vice President. Section 111.24 of the city code requires all applicants for on-sale liquor to have a public hearing prior to issuance of the license. On April 14th, the city council set the public hearing for this evening. Proper notice was posted and published in the city's official newspaper and the affidavit of publication is on file. No comments have been received from the public to date. Police department has completed the necessary background investigation and finds no reason the license cannot be authorized at this time. There are two items before the council this evening. Number one is the public hearing. And number two, pending comments from the public or questions from the council, action on the resolution authorizing issuance of the on-sale intoxicating liquor and special license for Sunday liquor sales effective June 1st, 2022, subject to receipt of the necessary documents. And we have Mr. Mark Currie, the co-owner of Newt's 46 Incorporated, in the audience this evening. And with that, we'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Yeah, Mark, come on up. We're gonna do a couple of things. We're gonna, we're gonna take the public hearing first. Then I think we'll, we'll take the action item and then we'll give you a few minutes to tell us what you got going on. So I'll start with opening public, the, the public hearing. We'll start with our virtual audience. Is there anyone in our virtual audience who would like to speak to the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, there's no one who would like to speak.
Thank you, meeting organizer, as I took that out of the normal order and you, you played along nicely, so thank you. For our in-person audiences, is there anyone who would like to speak to the public hearing? One final opportunity. We'll close the public hearing. And we would look for a motion to adopt the resolution approving the on-sale intoxicating liquor and special license for Sunday liquor sales. Motion from Melander and a second from Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that, that carries and approves. So Mark, it's all yours. Tell us what you got going on.
All right. Well, introduce myself. My name is Mark Curry and I'm the co-owner of Creative Cosine with my brother, David. And this is our Newt's concept and it's, we're really excited to bring it up to Apple Valley. We're based out of Rochester. That's where we grew up. That's where our family's from. And we have been trying to grow to the concept to the metro and we, after a probably eight-year search, we, we found a spot. So we're looking forward to making a home up here and hopefully bringing you guys a great restaurant.
When do you, any ideas on when you may be open? I know that's a really hard question with, with help, with help and staffing.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna shoot for right about July 1st.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Well, we're happy to have you. It's been fun to watch that little area kind of grow and develop and you will be a draw. So welcome to Apple Valley.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 5E, which is the 2022 Special Assessment Role Number 679 for delinquent utilities. And Ron will walk us through this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor mentioned, this action item this evening is process to certify delinquent utilities. I'll start for the, I guess, the members of the public in the viewing audience. The city council has been through this twice a year forever. So they're well aware of this, but this is for the, mainly for the public and maybe anybody who's watching. We start the process with a letter that is sent out to any of our utility accounts that have a delinquent balance. This year, we sent out 543 letters. Last year, at this time, it was 848 letters. We've changed somewhat part of the process over the, actually over the last year and a half, trying to reduce the amount of delinquencies on a, as we go basis. So I'm hoping this sticks and we can get it down to a reduced number. That letter indicates that if it's not paid by, by the following month, the account will be certified for collection and a certification fee would be added. That letter was mailed March 2nd with a due date of March 24th. We also would include any payments that were received by, through the end of the day on the 25th, if they're postmarked. After that, after that deadline, the certification list is presented to the city council and a list was processed March 29th, presented at the city council, April 14th, city council meeting. At that point, the city council set a public hearing for this evening, May, May 12th as the hearing date. Letter was sent to the customer, notice, sent to the customer, the property owner notifying them of the public hearing date and payment deadlines and of course, payment amounts. Following the, the public hearing this evening, the city council is asked to consider adopting the special, the assessment role. If the assessment role is adopted, customers would have 30 days to pay without any additional interest being added. And that payment deadline then would become June 13th. Any accounts that are remaining unpaid at that time would be certified to the county for collection with the following year, 2023 property taxes. So the final list would reflect any prepayments that would be received up through June 13th and will certify it to the county auditor, as provided for in the statutes. There's two action items. The first one is Assessment Role 679 for delinquent utility and mowing charges for folks, utility customers connected to services. The total amount of the original assessment role was $146,263.77, which is technically the amount of the assessment role as the city council has historically adopted. And of course, before we certify it, we'll subtract any prepayments. As of today, approximately $19,595, representing 51 accounts, have paid since receiving the notices, leaving a balance as of today of $126,668.38. We estimate there'll be another 25, possibly up to 50 accounts that would pay, prepay prior to certification. As of today, no written objections have been received. The affidavits of publication have been received and are on file. The city council is asked to consider, asked to conduct the public hearing and then consider the adoption of the resolutions certifying for collection, delinquent utility charges in the amount of $146,263.77. So with that, available for questions or?
Other questions, questions for Ron? If not, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on the Special Assessment Role Number 679. For our in-person audiences, is there anyone who would like to speak to this public hearing? Meeting organizer, is there anyone in the virtual audience who would like to speak to this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, we have no one who would like to speak.
Thank you. And one last opportunity for our in-person attendees. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and I would look for a motion to adopt the resolution levying these assessments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Grendel, a second from Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. All right, that carries. We'll go on to item 5F and Ron's up again to talk about Special Assessment Roles, Number 680, 81, and 682.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor mentioned, this is for delinquent, delinquent tree removal, diseased tree removal charges. For diseased tree removals at three separate properties, there's been this year, following direction from the city council last year, on trying to mitigate the financial impacts of the diseased tree removals. An extended payment is being offered, so that is why we have three different assessment roles. It's basically three different lengths of term. So 680 would be for those parcels with a balance under 750. And then each year, each $750 would add a year to the assessment role. So 681 would be three years and 682 would be four years. The total of the resolution for all roles is $4,702.82 and reflects the charges, unpaid charges on these three parcels. There have been no prepayments or objections received as of today and the affidavits of publication have been received and are on file. With that, available for questions or?
Questions for Ron on this one. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for this, for the Special Assessment Roles, Number 680, 681, and 682. Is there anyone in our in-person audience who would like to speak to this item? Meeting organizer, is there anyone in our virtual audience who would like to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor, we have no one who would like to speak.
Thank you. And one last opportunity for our in-person audience. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and I will look for a motion to adopt the resolution levying, levying these assessments. Motion from Grendel, a second from Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those carry as well. That ends the action items this evening, or almost ends them anyway. We will move on to staff and council communications next. And Tom, do we have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one, and that is just a reminder of the opportunity to take a survey related to internet service in our city. So the Dakota County Broad So the Dakota County Broadband Board is conducting a survey across multiple cities of Dakota County. The intent is to gauge the high-speed internet needs of our citizens, and to get some ideas about how we can help to improve that. Councilmember Melander is our primary representative on the Dakota Broadband Board, and Ruth Grendel is our alternate member. It's made up of most of the cities in Dakota County, along with Dakota County, and that survey link is available on the city's website. The deadline to complete the survey is May 20th, so we're down to about the last week here for people to get their thoughts in. So just encourage everybody to get on to the city's website, look for those links. There's actually two surveys, one for business properties and one for residential properties. So pick the right survey, and we look forward to hearing your comments on internet needs in our city.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any items? John, go ahead.
If the Park and Rec Director would come forward and discuss the event for Friday night at Valleywood, please.
Oh, good call, thank you.
It was not on the calendar for staff. Go look at.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tomorrow evening at Valleywood, we will be hosting some free acoustical guitar played by Adam Daniels. I believe the event starts at 5, runs till 7. There'll be food for sale, along with beverages at the bar, and the public is welcome to attend. So again, tomorrow, Friday evening, at Valleywood, 5 to 7 p.m., Adam Daniels playing a free concert for anyone that would want to come and partake. The weather forecast is looking pretty promising, so please, please join us if you're able.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other comments? The only one I have to add is, it was on the consent agenda this evening, not worth pulling, but certainly worth recognizing, is item 4C, and it is public, which is to proclaim the week of May 15 as Public Works Week in recognition of our, of our Public Works staff, and I'm just going to pick a little, a little part of this, but it starts as whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital to the importance to the sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Apple Valley. And really easy to take for granted that when you turn the water faucet on at home, the water comes out and the streets get plowed, and after watching the storms last night, it just reminds you of all the extra work that goes into pulling those things together. So just want to say thanks to all of our Public Works staff, and publicly recognize that May 15 is Public Works Week. If you see them out, I certainly wouldn't hesitate to thank them for all the things they do. Tom, do you have something to add?
I do. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in addition to being Public Works Week, it's also National Police Week this week. I don't know why this particular time of the year has accumulated a number of proclamations that we handled tonight, as well as these that could easily have also been on our agenda. So May 11 through 17, National Police Week, observances taking place in Washington, D.C. A number of our officers are actually present for that event, and again, we thank them for what they do, and the recognition that they get through National Police Week as well.
Wonderful, thank you. And I think we showed that with everybody last night. I was caught out in the 9 p.m. fun last night, and I was working really hard to keep everybody safe, including, I saw our ambulance crews out as well, blocking traffic and keeping people safe. So it looks like everybody pitched in to do their jobs, so it was fun to see, as fun as it can be when you see everybody pitch in, anyway. The next item on the agenda is to approve the calendar of upcoming events. The next regular city council meeting is Thursday, May 26, at 7 p.m. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar of events?
Do we need to add tomorrow night on or not?
Should we? Yeah, we can take that amendment to add, yeah, let's make that amendment to add, add that on to the calendar of events.
Good idea.
So we'll, we'll take the motion to approve the calendar events with the addition of the May 13 music event at Valleywood.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Goodwin, a second from Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and finally, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. We stand adjourned.